Could everyone take your seats, please? Ooh, that's nice and quiet, I like it. Okay. Wait for a little bit.
Sorry, I'm kind of stretched out all over the place today. Well, no, this can be done.
We'll call this meeting to order. Would everyone rise for invocation? And Rabbi Greenberg, would you please come forward and lead us in invocation?
Almighty God, we stand before you in prayer, look favorably upon the mayor and honorable members of the city council of our great city of Benita Springs. We beseech you, Almighty and merciful God, to extend your grace to teach every member of this august body and bestow upon them the joy of life, good health, and prosperity. Bless these distinguished individuals who have been chosen to make laws and decisions for the citizens of our city. Let us recognize that these privileges positions enables us to actually perform one of the seven Noah Hyde laws given to us by God at the dawn of civilization. You commanded us to believe in one God, to respect life, respect property, respect family, respect your holy name, to respect all living creatures, and finally, the one performed here, that every society be governed by just laws which are based on the recognition and acknowledgement of you, oh God, as a sovereign ruler of all men and all nations. Grant these public servants wisdom and understanding in the noble pursuit of justice and equality. Give them guidance so they will always be conscious of your presence and will strive to enact laws with honesty and integrity in accordance with your will. Standing on the heels of Rosh Hashanah, which is not only the Jewish New Year, but also the birth of mankind and all beings in this world, where we celebrate renewal of all mankind, may they have the wisdom to turn adversity into opportunity and to transform the hard challenges we face today into the seeds from which we will sprout the growth of tomorrow. May our city serve as a beacon of light for people of all faiths and walks of life. May Benita Springs help achieve the goal so powerfully stated in our pledge of allegiance so that America is truly one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi. Councilman Slakka, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh, Councilwoman Martin, here. Councilman Slakka, here. Mayor Nelson, here. Councilman Simmons, here. Councilman Gibson, here. Councilman Longcart, here.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
Fine morning it is. And let's see, we'll go to public comment on agenda items. That's on agenda items only. If anyone wishes to speak on any matter that's on the agenda, please come forward.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Al Greenwood. I own the Buffalo Chips Restaurant in Benita Springs on 041. Also a member of the Benita Springs Lions Club. And we want to move our flea market to the dog track at the corner of 41 and Benita Beach Road. All the proceeds that the Benita Springs Lions Club receive from our markets, we bring it right back into charity, it goes right back into the city. And we appreciate your support so that we can continue. We've been hap- the Lions Club has been having a flea market on 041 since I came here thirty-some years ago. It used to be in the ballpark where the Banshee is now. And we'd like to continue that tradition with the Lions Club to make money and give it back to the community. And thank you on that item. And I just wanted to request that we have a hedge that goes from Rosemary to in front of Nelson's Plaza on the west side of 041. I've been asking for ten months to please replace the about a hundred dead pieces of the hedge. They trimmed it down a foot high and it's dead. And I've asked the staff and they say wait for redevelopment to replace the hedge. So I'm asking the city to please do something to replace this ugly hedge that 25 percent of it is dead, from Rosemary to Nelson's Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes, for the record, Benita Springs resident. I'm here to support anything that the city council can do to ban medical marijuana inside the city limits of Benita Springs. It's too bad you can't do it for the whole county. Couple little side points about that. It's been on TV a number of times that one of the things that happens, for example, out in Colorado, one of the big problems they have is all these medical marijuana dispensing facilities, they're not paying their taxes. So it really, it isn't even a moneymaker. So I would urge city council to come up with something that would be able to ban it in case that thing goes through on the state ballot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, good morning. My name is Daniel Williams. I've been a full-time resident of Benita Springs since 1993, and I'm here to speak on behalf of medical marijuana in the city of Benita Springs. There is a tremendous amount of misinformation, not only in our community but across the country, on the pros and cons of medical marijuana. I have closely followed over the past forty years drug use and drug prohibition and its effects on our society and the world at large. It is important that information be disseminated that is accurate and honest and unbiased. The information that you have today with regards to medical marijuana, I believe, is completely, not completely, but very much incorrect, and you need greater information. As I've followed this for over the forty years, I've become quite an expert, at least in my opinion, and I wrote a book in 2004, which is considered one of the definitive works on drug prohibition and its effects on society at large. There is a need for this medicine, a much broader need than is expected and a much broader need that has been identified. Many people do not understand or know that each year, thousands of people die from taking NSAIDs, which are non-steroidal anti-inflammatory drugs. Sixteen thousand people a year die from these drugs. Over 10 percent of these people die from acetaminophen poisoning, which is Tylenol. These are non-inflammatory or non-steroidal inflammatory drugs that work for mild to severe pain. We have just recently, in our government, increased the schedule for hydrocodone from schedule three to schedule two, which makes it much more difficult for pain patients to get this medication. Allowing medical marijuana into our community to help supplement and replace these opiate drugs, these very addicting drugs, will be of great benefit to the community at large, especially our veterans. We have a large population of elderly people in this area, many of them are veterans. There are a number of studies that can be cited and referenced of using marijuana to treat post-traumatic stress disorder, and these clinical trials have been extremely well-received and the results have been very encouraging. So as we, as a society, we tighten our access to these opiate addictive drugs, we need to, in similar, parallel track, enable individuals to use medical marijuana to treat some of these inflammatory, mild to severe pain problems that we have. Again, veterans in this area represent a large number of our population. Allowing veterans to use medical marijuana for their post-traumatic stress disorder problems would be of great benefit, not only to the veterans, but to Benita Springs as a whole. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Jeff Chitwood, resident here in Benita Springs, as well as minister of the Anchor Christian Church on East Terry. I also want to address the medical marijuana issue. Want to encourage the city council to look at it and to give direction to the attorney to pursue all sides and issues of that. Concerning the use of medical marijuana, whether it's helpful or not helpful, the one issue that I guess I should say I'm not against something will help people, okay? But what I don't understand about this particular issue is if it is a medicine, if it is helpful, then let it be, let it go through the process of all other medicines. We have drugstores, we have pharmaceutical companies, we have things like that. It doesn't seem that this has to pursue those avenues as all other drugs that help people with pain and other maladies. So I think the amendment that is before the Florida voters does place restrictions on its use, but it also opens the door for abuse of that. And there's just a lot of things that really need to be considered. I know a lot of the decisions the board makes has to do with financial, revenue, taxes, all of those issues, and those are important issues, and you try and make the best decision for the Benita Springs community. I think there are some decisions that go above the financial and fiscal considerations. There are decisions that define the moral character of a city and of its leaders, and I think this is one of these issues that will make a statement of Benita Springs, the community, and its leadership on where they stand on an issue that has two sides, has issues, but it also has a lot of things to be considered before making a decision on that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning. Bob Hilliard, a resident of Benita Springs and a member of the Benita Springs Lions Club. First off, I'd like to thank the city of Benita Springs and the community at large for their support of our Lions Club over the past forty-two years for our farmer's market. This year, we've moved our market to the Benita Springs, our Fort Myers, Naples Fort Myers dog track at 41, 041 and Benita Beach Road. We are looking for support. We're optimistic this year. We've got a great location. We're a little concerned about getting our vendors on board this year, but we're really looking for the community to stand by us as they have in the past. The Lions Club gives back over $300,000 each year into our community, supporting such causes as our literacy council, the Benita Springs Assistance Office, the Boy Scouts, scholarship programs, and many educational programs at schools that are underfunded by the government this day and time. So we look to you and to our city members to please come and support the Benita Springs Lions Club markets. Also, as a retired veteran and with many friends suffering from PDS, I urge you to look very closely, as the pastor and others have said, on the marijuana use issue. In a nutshell, when you have issues like this, you've got to have a gate to control it, and you need to make sure that that gate controls it properly. So look at all the avenues and make the right decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kevin Berry, president of the Benita Blues Festival and Benita Blues Charitable Foundation and Benita resident, and I'm not here to talk about medical marijuana.
Yay! Sorry.
That's all right. I, we just respectfully request again, we are planning on having our festival March 6th and 7th, 2015, and obviously, we are very proud to work with the city. We, I don't know, there's a few things I don't know if you know. Thanks to the help of the city and the years we've been putting this festival on, we have now given away $98,000 to local charities. So that's been a great thing over the years. We have actually had individuals change their vacation plans by attending our festival. Now they vacation down here every year, taking sometimes a week to ten days, just so they can help us out at the festival. And we've had a couple people actually buy homes here because they came down to the festival, liked what they saw, enjoyed Benita that much, and have purchased homes. And there's a couple more that I know of, they're in the process of searching now. So again, we respectfully request that you work with us again for hopefully years to come, and we can actually get a, what we, our goal, honestly, at least my goal, is to someday have a star here that is showing the Blues Trail, they call it. It runs all across the country, and I've been to a couple locations around the, around the country where they have an actual monument stating that, you know, it's part of the Blues Trail of America due to, hopefully, the things that together we can put together with the Benita Blues Festival and the Benita Blues Charitable Foundation over the years to come. So thank you very much.
I'd just like to say I appreciate all your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Good work. Thanks. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any agenda item. Seeing none, that's it for public comment on agenda items, and we'll go to proclamations and presentations. And Christine Ross, would you please come forward, please? And if you'd like to bring part of your entourage, that'd be all right, too. Oh. Entourage, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's our Reader's Digest word for me this week. Actually, the first graders asked me if I had an entourage, and I'm like, you know the word "entourage"? What kind of world is this?
Great show, ain't it?
Yeah, I have to tell you guys, on a very personal basis, Christine became the executive director of the chamber about the same time I became mayor, and we got to know each other there, and it seemed, at first, an lack of pairing the Florida cracker with the irreverent sense of humor and the very proper, very businesslike new director of the place, but we have had a great working relationship, and I have to tell you, it's just been a real pleasure to know you as a person, and you are just a consummate businessperson, and you have really fell in love with this community and really helped us out in so many ways. I know sometimes that people don't agree with this and that when it comes to the city, but your love for the city, just bar none, is matched anybody's. So thank you so much for everything you've done there. And just recently, Christine has been recognized throughout the state by, it doesn't say the name of the organization, what's the name of the organization?
The Florida Association of Chamber of Commerce Professionals.
The Florida Association of Chamber of Commerce Professionals. Certificate of Recognition, Christine Ross, President and CEO of 2014 Chamber Executive of the Year in the state of Florida. So congratulations. And as further proof of the, of what Christine's been able to do for this community and for this chamber, this is another certificate of recognition presented to the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce for being named the 2014 Chamber of the Year by the floor associates of Chamber of Professionals. More proof, thank you very much. Everybody, give her a hand, please, and give our chamber a hand.
Thank you, guys.
Christine, would you like to say something?
Oh, my goodness. All right.
Go ahead.
Well, this is because of the team that I have behind me and the awesome volunteer board of directors that lets me do the kind of job that I'm able to do. So I thank you for this recognition on behalf of all of us.
Thank you so much. And we want you to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Industries and Businesses, it's Industry Appreciation Week. And it's whereas industries and businesses within the city of Benita Springs and Lee County are vital to the community economic development base, and whereas the city of Benita Springs and Lee County's existing industries are the key to a prosperous future, and whereas the expansion of these industries accounts for the majority of the new jobs created, and whereas our industry and business community improve the quality of life in the city of Benita Springs by supporting and sponsoring multiple educational, cultural, and recreational programs, and whereas the public knowledge of the contributions made by industry is essential to the maintenance of good community-industry relationships. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson Jr., Mayor of the city of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of September 15th to the 19th, 2014, as Industry Appreciation Week in the city of Benita Springs, and encourage all residents to pay tribute to our businesses and their contributions to the Benita Springs economic well-being, and on behalf of the city council and citizens of Benita Springs, thank you for everything you do on that.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I'll do this from up here. I have another proclamation, and it's, I'll read it from up here. We don't have anyone to accept this. And it is a proclamation for, this is for Manufacturing Day, which is, has an economic component as well, as you know. Whereas Manufacturing Day is an annual coordinated occasion during which U.S. manufacturers open their doors to demonstrate the potential of modern manufacturing and foster interest in manufacturing careers, and whereas Manufacturing Day was created to correct public perception, which doesn't do manufacturing justice. Manufacturing environments, which include highly trained, well-paid employees who work on state-of-the-art equipment, are commonly thought of as antiquated facilities designed for low-skilled workers. Manufacturing Day addresses this misperception by giving all manufacturers an opportunity to open their doors and show in a coordinated effort exactly what manufacturing is and isn't. Whereas this change in perception is the first step in addressing one of the main challenges faced by manufacturers today, a gap in skilled labor. By giving manufacturers an occasion to share what they do with their communities, Manufacturing Day provides the manufacturers with an opportunity to connect directly with job seekers and students, to begin to address the skilled labor shortage that we all face. And whereas Manufacturing Day amplifies the voice of individual manufacturers and delivers a coordinated message about common concerns and challenges, the rallying point for a growing mass movement. Manufacturing Day empowers manufacturers to come together to address their collective challenges so they can help their communities and future generations thrive. Now therefore, I, Ben Nelson, Mayor of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim October 3rd, 2014, as Manufacturing Day in the city of Benita Springs. There you go. And at this time, let's see, oh, and we do have a presentation for Kathy McGrath, who's for her contribution to the Plant a Tree program, but she's not here, so we'll put that off to the next meeting? Yeah, okay, good. And we'll go right along to, we are to receive the Benita Springs Estero Economic Development Council Quarterly Report. Hey, Rich.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Richard Mancini, interim chairman of the Benita Springs Estero Economic Development Council, and it's always a real pleasure and honor to be before you, to give you the 2013-2014 Year in Review of the Economic Development Council and what we've been up to for the past year. On my way in this morning, I was thinking about the presentation and, you know, anticipating any questions the council may have, and I was, it's been four years now that the EDC has been operating in partnership with the city and so many other businesses and resource partners. And I think sometimes we forget just how special this relationship and what we've been doing together is, and I wanted to kind of highlight that again. This public-private partnership and what the city and the EDC and the business community has been doing over the past four years is very unique, and it's recognized around the state, and we're getting national recognition for the kind of relationship, and the staff and the council and the business leaders work together on a lot of these matters and a lot of the success that we've had. And I just wanted to say thank you again to all of you for your commitment to this process and to what we've been trying to do since its inception back in 2010 and 2011. You've got a more detailed report on the Year in Review, but I just wanted to highlight a few of the numbers and then issues, and see if I do this right. Here we go. I want to remind everybody, because again, we, sometimes, you know, you do strategic planning and you create a report and you put it on the shelf, and you forget sometimes to go back and look at it and remember what your vision and your mission is. And the vision of the Economic Development Council is to build a place to live and work that is economically diverse with a year-round economy that also enhances the environment and reflects the character of its inhabitants. And we're very proud over the last couple of years, as we go through this report, you'll see, that we've really done a very good job with your help on that year-round component. We're looking at a diversified economic base, we're bringing in companies that represent a number of different industry classifications, different kinds of jobs, and really adding, I think, to the beauty and the character of the economic base in this area. Since the inception of the Benita Springs Estero Economic Development Council, we've handled 108 direct leads, forty of them in the 2013-2014 fiscal year. There are currently three confidentiality agreements in place, and the retained, attracted, and expected jobs from our activities this year are just over 350 jobs into the Benita Springs area. We focused, I think, at the direction and in cooperation with the city on our regional efforts, and we have now a strong partnership with the Southwest Florida Regional Economic Development Alliance, and we're reaching out to those out-of-state sources for additional leads and additional opportunities to expand the economic base. And in that regard, the EDC created a national site selector database, and we've launched an email campaign to keep those site selectors, the folks that some of the larger companies would talk to, to keep them informed on what's going on in Benita, keep them up to date on what's going on with the EDC and the successes that we've had. There we go. Back at the very beginning, and I think it was Councilman Longcart and others had asked Councilman McIntosh, what are we getting for the investment in the Economic Development Council? And we've been trying very hard to track those numbers and keep the council and our investors up to date on what that means. And as you can see, since the inception, again, there's been about sixty, just over $61 million in direct and indirect economic impact from the companies and the businesses that the EDC has worked with on relocating to or expanding within the Benita Springs area. The investment from the city is $150,000 during that same period of time, and that's a return on investment of just over $400 per dollar spent. That's a pretty dramatic number. We were reminiscing, and I think the first time we did this presentation a few years ago to the council, that question was asked, and we did a calculation, and it was about $80 per dollar invested back at the beginning of the organization. So on an average, over the years, that 406 number is pretty impressive until you look at this year. And for this year, the fiscal year of 2013-2014, the economic impact to the Benita Springs area of the companies we've worked with directly and the indirect and direct numbers are just over $50 million of economic impact for the $25,000 the city invests with the EDC. That's a return on investment of just over $2,000 per dollar. That's a pretty amazing number, and we're very proud of the work that we do with your help to make that happen. Going the wrong way. There we go. In June of 2014, again, at the suggestion of our investors and the input that we received from the folks that use the site, we updated the EDC's website. It's now a completely responsive design. I didn't know what that meant, but it means that if you look on your phone or on your tablet or on different formatted systems, it'll automatically format to what you're looking at, so you don't have to move it around. It makes it much more user-friendly, and access to the data is what we're going for because we're getting more and more people looking at Benita Springs and what the EDC is doing. We've cooperated and partnered, as we have for a long time, with Lee County for their GIS analytic tool, which is called Size Up. And we've identified a number of the demographic and labor force data that most site selectors and most folks look at initially to begin the process of looking at a community. Marketing and communications, again, part of, if you recall, part of our strategic plan long-term has always been to look at both internal and external marketing and communications, tell the Benita Springs story, tell how wonderful it is, and make sure the folks that are making the decisions know about all the positives and all the things that the community has to offer. So we've launched a monthly Benita Springs Economic Development e-news, and so far, we have over 1,100 monthly readers of that, 50 press mentions from 21 press releases. That averages about one a week. That's pretty good. And I, just as a side note, I was searching for something, I can't remember what it was, and I ran across a newspaper article from Iowa. I think it was in the Des Moines Register, I think is the local newspaper up there, and it was a story about Benita Springs. That kind of national publicity, as well as the cooperation, the partnership with the local media, makes a huge difference in what we're working on and what we're accomplishing. And I think really, a critical point is the city of Benita Springs has been declared the best permitting practice by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. And what that means is that the work that the city has done to streamline the process, to cooperate with all the different departments that need to permit, and you've heard the anecdotal stories and the direct stories from so many people telling you how easy it is and what a pleasure it is to do business with the city of Benita Springs as compared to cities and towns and counties all over the state and all over the country, and that's a big step. List of some of the companies, there's more detail in the package that you've got, but here are just a few of the companies that we've worked with this year in retention and expansion assistance. Of course Shaw Development, a great, again, with the cooperation of the city being able to do what we did. CRE Companies, Envirostruct, and again, I won't go down them all in detail, but they're there, and every one of those either retained or created another job and additional economic, positive economic impact on Benita Springs. positive economic impact on Bonita Springs. The new businesses, obviously, Hertz, Camuto Group, Global Tech, LED, and there are a number of others, and again, the details of those individual successes are identified in more detail in the written package. The use permit activity from the city for 2014, 126 permits, 530,000-plus square feet, over 1,000 employees. The economy of Bonita Springs is healthy. It's getting healthier. It's getting stronger, and again, we're pleased to be partners with the city in making that happen. You can see the 2011, 2012, 2013 historical numbers, and for me, the nicest numbers, if you look in 2014 to date, were already well above the employment generation from any of the previous three years. And that's good not only for the businesses but for the residents because it creates job opportunities. The cumulative impact, the impact fee savings that the city was one of the first things that we worked together on, and the city passed. You can see each year, there have been a number of users to do that. The total savings as a result of those impact fee savings is over $400,000. And just as a side note, what we're going to try to formulate, working again with staff, is not only the savings for the businesses, but also what the impact fee impact is and a positive side for the city, because a lot of these change of uses were empty buildings, things that weren't being used for their intended purpose. And when we did the change of use, it's, we were able to work with the city to save the businesses a significant amount of money, but it also created a building that's now being used, and there are other impact fees that went along with that. So we're going to try to get you those updated numbers as well. And again, one of the things that we've continually talked about, and is an important number, is the vacancy rates. As everybody remembers, when the market turned, we had a lot of space. We had stuff that was still in the pipeline that then got finished and sat empty for a very long time. The really good news is if you look at the numbers, this is Class A and Class B office space, that the five-year moving average is about 24.5%. We're now down to about 19.5%. We're down below 500,000 square feet, and a couple of the announced companies that we've worked with, Camuto Group and others, are going to take down even more of that Class A and Class B space, make that vacancy rate go down even further. The industrial and flex space is the same. Again, the five-year moving average is about 11.6%. It's now down to 6.3%. Really great numbers, and as you can see, the trend has been excellent since the recovery, the national recovery started. We've done an excellent job filling in that space. A million square feet was always a number that we've talked about. If you recall back when we started, I think the number was over 1.5 million-plus square feet of empty space total. That's office, industrial, and retail. As of the making of this report, we're now down to just barely over a million square feet. But if you take into consideration what we hope will be the Camuto Group space, as well as Old Time Pottery taking over the old Kmart location, that space will come off the board. And so I believe with those, with that space taken, we'll be under a million square feet, which is a great threshold to get past. And we'll continue to work to get that number lower, because what's going to happen, as we all know, is once those available square footage numbers get low enough, developers will start building more space as the community continues to grow. So we're looking forward to that happening as well. Our resource partners are invaluable to what we do. They've been involved in this process from the very beginning. We can't thank them enough. There's a list of them, and again, without sponsors, without the investors, the EDC couldn't do it, including the city as our main financial partner, and we very much appreciate everything that's gone on the past year. Glad to answer any questions and hopefully, and look forward to the city's continued investment in the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
Thank you very much, and thanks, Bill, for bringing up the night. Any questions for the gentleman? Yes, Steve?
One question, Richard, and a couple comments. What states have we reached out to and what state seems to be interested in Bonita Springs?
Good question, and it's really hard to tell because most of our reach-out has been to the professional site selectors. I know there's a number of them, as an example, in the North Carolina area. That just happens to be where they're based, but their coverage is national. You know, so it's hard to say directly what state, but I can tell you that anecdotally, if you look at the national averages, the states that have imposed high burdens on the businesses, the business communities, high taxes, high regulatory functions, difficulty in the permitting process, those are the states most likely to have folks within them looking to make a move. So we're really more compared to those states that have become pro-business, and those are our main competitors, but I can't give you any more detail than that.
Well, and on the very positive side, the retention of Shaw Development definitely is just absolutely fantastic. However, I just want you to know that some of people I've talked to still come up with the, why, where were they when it came to Source Interlink? And I said, "It's a totally different animal." So could you address that for the...
I assumed somebody was going to ask that this morning, and I thought about it on the way in, and it's a great question, and it's a fair question. Shaw Development came to the city, came to the EDC and said, "We're having a problem. Here's our problem. Let's work together to see if we can figure out a way to solve this problem, because we love Bonita, we want to stay here, but we can't unless we can solve this problem." The players that needed to come to the table came to the table, solved the problem, a very happy company, was able to do what they needed to do and expand and create even more economic impact. Source Interlink, unfortunately, a bunch of lawyers in New York started arguing over a contract, and Ty Warner said, "See ya." There was no way for us to have injected ourselves into that process to try to help. There's nothing that the EDC or the city could have done.
Nor did they seek the opportunity.
And that, exactly right. Nor did they come to us and say, "Hey, we have a problem here. Is there anything you can do to help us?" So I think it's definitely apples to oranges in those two comparisons.
Just one other comment. We've shown three other organizations that 96,000-square-foot space since the announcement was made about Source Interlink, and so we feel pretty confident that we have at least one hot prospect out of those three.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, thank you.
Janet?
Thank you so much. Thanks for the, I love when you come and do this. It's a good news story. Thank you for listing our partners, because I'm very proud to be on council at a time when the city partnered with Bonita Springs Utilities, the Bonita Springs Fire District, and, you know, we're the ones that came up with the idea for the one-stop permitting, and it's been a true success that's put Bonita Springs on the map. My question is, and I've been asked this since the very beginning, and I always tiptoe around it, and I give everyone the answer that I say that it's a regional thing, but the city is the one that has been a major investor, yet on the letterhead, we've got Bonita Springs and Astero. Is there any point or any direction from the EDC at this point, since Astero is working towards incorporation, that obviously they have to have a budget to do this, they have a chamber, they have a funding source coming up now, will they be partnering up the same amount of money to be on that letterhead?
That is a decision for the leadership that eventually gets established in Astero if it happens to make. We certainly hope so. That it certainly would be our intent that they partner with us. One of the reasons why, at the beginning of this process, it was important to have Astero on the letterhead is because this is a regional effort. As an example, Hertz.
Right, I know, and that's the answer.
You have to have them there, and if you look at our main sponsor list, a number of those main sponsors are actually based in Astero. But understand that the positive things that happen in Bonita Springs have a positive effect on them and vice versa. So we certainly hope that they do. ECCL has been a member since inception. The Astero Chamber is an investor in the EDC, and a number of businesses from Astero are investors. So we hope that the city, village, whatever comes out of that process, if it does come out, will make that same commitment and work with us on economic development.
Right, I had to ask just because I hear that all the time from my residents who are the ones that are, you know, saying, "We're putting our taxpayers' dollars in." Why do they get off?
Right.
So I needed to ask.
As do we. I mean, we get asked that question as an EDC, why? And I think the regional component is critical, but more importantly, political boundaries are just lines on a map, and, you know, the Bonita Springs Health Center and things that happen up near Coconut Point have a positive impact on the city within the functioning city limits. So we're, you know, we hope that's going to happen, and we may ask for your help to make that happen.
Yeah, Janet, that's a really good point for us to keep in our minds as we see what happens to our neighbors, because there is no end to the partnering that we could do with a sister city. I mean, really is, there's so many opportunities.
Absolutely.
Or it could be that everybody does their own thing. You never know. But you know what? I think, I hope that in the future, when there are opportunities to do that, and when they make, when it makes financial and fiscal kind of sense, that we avail ourselves of that. So good point.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Okay, I was just going to ask, you know, when you talk, and we look at like seed money and startup money, money to get, money to get people started and going. Do you have a sense of, will this organization at some point become economically viable on its own and not need funding from the city of Bonita Springs? In other words, you know, seed money, startup money, understand all that, support it, love it, but at some point, do you see, or are you going, do you foresee continual funding from the city of Bonita Springs?
Well, again, that'll be up to you guys, to the council, at any given time. My view of it, and I think the long-term vision of the Economic Development Council was always that the city would be a partner, financial and functioning. If you recall, and this is a number of years ago, but if you recall, the initial startup money was actually structured differently than just the annual investment has been, and that was done at the city's direction on purpose, because it was startup dollars, and at this point, it is investor dollars, and clearly, the main investor and the most important partner, because everything that happens within the city obviously has to go through the council, go through staff, you know, go through the permitting process. But I, my opinion, I hope that the city continues to be an investor in this process as long as this process is in place and is benefiting the city and the residents of Bonita Springs.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Bill?
Rich, thank you very much for being here. After four years, obviously, we have, everything is working real well, and your presentation today was right on point, and I thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions for Rich? Yes, Steve?
John, a question for you. I may have lost it in translation somewhere, but what with Arlene on medical leave, who is, who is her replacement till she comes back?
We've made internal movements and assigned Arlene's tasks, so they are completely covered. Jackie over at Community Development is going to be our lead person over there, and Carl will probably be the point person for anything that needs to be dealt with internally, but we're comfortable we've got those issues covered.
Thank you, sir.
Hopefully for a relatively short period of time.
It only took like five people to...
I was going to say, I mentioned, you're exactly right.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Eltern crew for what they accomplish.
Where did we put the keys to City Hall? I don't know.
She's three in one.
Three in one. Thank you very much for a good presentation.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Well done, well done. Okay, now we are to the consent agenda. Council, take a look at it, and let me know if there's anything you'd like to pull off there, or what would you like to do?
Move the agenda.
I'd like to pull C.
We'd like to pull item C, and anything else?
Second on the bill's motion?
There's a motion and a second to approve the remainder. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slafta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Okay, item C.
Well, mainly, I pulled it because of the, my main concern is the road closure on Sunday. I was just wanting to see if it could be changed from Wilson to Reynolds Street to divert the traffic there. Reynolds is a wider street, so it can handle bigger vehicles that need a wider turning radius, and just wondering, is that something that can be done?
Morning.
Morning.
I would like to take this back to the event organizer and discuss that with them. In the past, they've usually done this portion of the street, so if you don't mind, maybe I could bring it back to the next meeting.
How about the lieutenant? Can he address that?
Well, Laura, I mean, are we talking, this is the same issue, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. It's the taste of Bonita. On Sunday, they closed from Wilson to Pennsylvania. It's the same issue that we just had for the art festival, but we have moved the road closure back for some movies in the park. So if it would be doable for the organizer, and I could talk with the sheriff's office, I'd be willing to do that if that's what council's direction is.
Mike, is your business open on a Sunday?
The bait shop is, and we have boats coming in, and it'd be a lot easier for them to go into the parking lot and pull back out if the road closure was at Reynolds instead.
Okay. Would a representative of the Assistance Office and the Rotary Club like to say something? Yes, miss?
For the record, it's a Rotary Club of Bonita Springs noon event, not the Assistance Office, just so you know. I think once we check with the Sheriff's Department, it's really their call on the road closure, on what's safe, but we don't have a problem with it if the Sheriff's Department doesn't, so.
Okay. So, okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No, you're cute.
Boom.
Was that inappropriate?
Okay, it's your wife.
You could get away with it.
In her voice.
Don't tell my wife I said that. Yeah, so Laura, I mean, is that something we could work, approve now and work out in the meantime, or what would you like to do?
I'm not quite sure, since I didn't know that this issue was going to come up. Look, let me ask Laura, is this any time-critical nature to this approval today? I mean, is this something that we could approve in general pending out, you know, resolution of the traffic flow problem so that they can move on?
Absolutely.
Would that be acceptable?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's...
What about the lieutenant? Could we just have him come up and address it now?
Yeah, but...
I'd rather not have them debate the ins and outs of the logistics of the traffic here, but I guess my suggestion would be, if possible, if we could approve the balance of the plan, the fact that it's going forward so that people can start their advertising, but for the issue of road closures and then bring that back to you.
Sounds good, so move it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second, and we're going ahead and prove this, and it's also to have staff go ahead and work with everybody involved to see if they can do that and do it safely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That motion? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slafta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Okay.
Thank you for that.
May I?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry. Public comment, again. This is a public comment. Any public comment at this time on any city-related item? Please come forward. City-related item, yeah, yeah, city-related. You've got a good imagination, so I've got to be careful of that.
Well, that's true. I have a good imagination. The, actually, I'm here to talk about two things. One is, I think that city council should be looking at ways where they can, on key projects, be much more participatory in the selection process of the consultants, whether it be land planning, traffic engineering, vision study, whatever. And there is a great change in the nation in a lot of areas, including traffic engineering. There are companies now that are traffic engineers that view looking at a traffic study of a road at not just a way of moving vehicles on the road quickly, but also creating a more positive impact on the surrounding businesses, residential areas, and all that. So I would suggest you look at that. Secondly, there was a report that was circulated to city council on, was it done by a traffic engineering firm, I believe, on Bonita Beach Road and all that. I just wanted to point out that on page four and page eight, even though nobody knows anything about flyovers and interchanges, it says interchange for Bonita Beach Road, Route 41, on both those pages. And that goes way back to a report that was either '06 or '07 finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
My name is Al Greenwood, and I own the Buffalo Chips Restaurant in Bonita, in beautiful downtown Bonita. I'd like to talk about redevelopment. Numerous years ago, they realigned the 041 road at Rosemary and took 20 feet of my property on that side of the road. In 1998, they widened 041 from Terry Street to Bonita Beach, to Rosemary, and made it a four-lane road, and they took 15 feet of my property at that time. Johnson Engineering also elevated the road four feet, and I called Ray Judah down and asked him to come and help us because... him to come and help us because there was a large retention pond design next to my house. The road was four foot too high and every time it rained, we would be underwater at Rosemary. So, Comer, Taylor and Janet Watermeyer came and they lowered the road two feet and Comer put in five drains and run the drains south and into the ditch or retention area behind our property. I'm saying all this to you to let you know that common sense sometimes overrules engineering design and please don't put a roundabout at Rosemary and 041. And, uh, someone also said you might put one at Dean Street. If you wanna put a roundabout somewhere to make it cute, try Shangri-La and 041. It's a very large intersection and with to build up a new traffic when you finally open the Imperial Parkway, uh, connection to Shangri-La, that roundabout would probably be of use there. And speaking of Shangri-La, I drove down it on Monday. There was not one car, one truck, one employee working on the road and I drove to the great big concrete embutments and that blocks the road from being accessed to Imperial Parkway. And there's also a real nice porta potty right in the middle of the road. So, my thoughts to you is please finish this road. There's only about 50 to 100 feet of gravel on one side of the road that needs to be paved and you could open this up and the citizens could use this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Morning.
John Pano, CGT Kayaks in Riverside Park. Uh, you might've seen this morning's paper. We love this city and we, um, again, would like to thank you guys for doing the tremendous job that you've been doing. Um, one of the issues I did wanna bring up, I know that's coming up in the future, is signage. Um, and we use A-frame signs because we're off the road and that's the only way we can communicate to the public on 041. Um, we just, uh, want you to understand that we also, on our signage, put on events that are going on in the park, both free and not free, city events, assortment of events that go on. And to eliminate those kinds of signs would essentially, um, be kinda like cutting off your nose to spite your face because it does help represent a lot of the city, things that are going on. I'd also, excuse me, also like to thank you for, uh, considering the, the road issue. Uh, one of the things that I've noticed in the past years is, uh, we don't utilize the park behind Lyle's Hotel. Um, we have that beautiful space back there and we put people and vendors out in the road. Uh, and it just doesn't seem logical when we could be putting vendors right there in that part of the park and keeping the road open so we're not getting a bottleneck there. Just my observation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm, my name's David Carr. I'm a local CPA here in Lee County. Um, I've come to invite you to a couple, um, things, uh, both the council members and the residents of Benita Springs. On September 27th and 28th, uh, the Invest in America's Veterans Foundation is hosting a two-day event at Jep, Jep Lou Park. It's always said that we don't have enough things for the kids to do around here. Well, on Saturday, we have seven, seven bands and on Sunday, we have three bands. We also have a motorcycle rally and bike show. We have a car show and a monster truck show. Uh, we also have a military museum displays there and our, and our junior RONC and a RONC recruit competition. So, for this two days, uh, Sunday's Family Day and it's $7 for everyone, kids under 12, free. On Saturday, it's a $10 fee, gets you into all the shows and all the bands. Uh, on Saturday, uh, we have Ellie Lee and the Blues Fury starting it off, Maggie Baugh, Redemptions, Grayson Rogers, One Night Rodeo, Southern Rocks Finest and Brian Howe, former singer of Bad Company. On Sunday, we have Critter Ridge, Kim Betts and the Gamble Creek Band and Casey Weston, Naples Zone from The Voice. Uh, so it's gonna be a good event. I'd like to send some poster boards out for you to post in your break rooms and maybe some handbills if I could get a contact on that.
Uh, you probably could just go ahead and see our, uh, city clerk there after the meeting there.
Okay, thank you very much. And the second thing I'd like to invite you to with, uh, is at Florida Southwestern, the old Edison College. And if you come in off of Edison, uh, the first parking lot on the left, they have a Thursday morning BUPAC meeting, uh, Business People United, Fort Myers Branch. And, uh, this, uh, Thursday morning, Ken Shealan, he's a state expert on domestic partnership registries. Uh, I, I myself will also be giving the second half of the speech, which is benefits that have been extended at the federal level. And what I'm trying to do is make Lee County more inclusive on their employment policies, which affects some of the city with your city employees, and also accommodations within your limits such as hotels. And also, Camuto Group, if I, if you don't know, was, uh, based out of Connecticut prior to this. And they were the third, third state in the union to legalize, uh, same-sex marriage. And that was in 2008, I believe. And since 2001, Connecticut and their state laws had equal protection legislation. And that's what really the speech is about. It's not about the earlier, it's about the latter, equal protections. So, I'd like to thank you and have a great day.
Thank you very much.
And I really appreciate the turnout you guys have at your meet, local meeting here. Thank you.
It's, it's amazing what some issues will do. Thank, thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Uh, any city-related issue? Okay, we'll close public comment. And now for the, uh, drum roll, city attorney's report.
Thank you. I have one item on the agenda and it's to discuss, uh, medical marijuana. Uh, this is something that is a ballot language. Now, I hope you have a copy of the memorandum I provided you Monday, um, because there's different things and you'll see the actual ballot after the, uh, second page. I just took the ballot. I did highlight the parts that I thought were important for local government. This is not, um, a discussion today on the pros and cons of it. Um, it's not, I mean, that's not the objective here. The objective is how does it affect local government or how does it affect the city of Benita Springs? Uh, with that being said, what was interesting in the ballot language is that they do not have a definition for dispensary. Instead, they have a definition for medical marijuana treatment center. The concern here is, once it's in the constitution, you're never gonna get it out of the constitution or it's very unlikely you'll get it out of the constitution. So, you're, if this passes, and again, this is only in the event everything passes, uh, this will become the law of this, um, of the state of Florida and it's a very broad definition. So, I would encourage you not to try to ban medical treatment center because the way I read the definition, that could be the library. It could be the optometrist office. It could be Target. Um, and I, the example I give is I have both grandmothers have glaucoma. So, I get tested, you know, for eye pressure, you know, because one day it's inevitable, I'll probably have it. And it's possible that the doctor may want to give me a brochure, just like I go to any other of my doctors. They give me brochures on such. And the way I read that, that doctor's office would then, could be Target, could be anyplace you go. You know, if they give you that brochure, you now are being treated at a treatment center. So, I mean, you could broadly define it that way and you definitely, my guess is council wants hospitals. They want medical, uh, facilities. So, you wanna be very careful in your terms. Uh, the one thing in the constitutional text in the ballot amendment that if passes, and I would encourage council to pass sooner than later and I'll explain why, would be, um, the discussion as if you wanted to ban smoking of medical marijuana in public places. Now, this does not prohibit, uh, marijuana in the privacy of one's home. This would only be in public facilities, um, or public places. And we already do that with alcohol. And the reason that I'm making this recommendation is twofold. One, marijuana has a distinctive smell and, you know, regardless of how someone feels, and this is only for smoking of marijuana, it's not for ingestion or anything else, the smell could be very strong and can be a distraction to other people. And so, I think you have a right and based on the reading of the ballot to ban it in the public places. But two, uh, just like, and I, I enjoy that, um, bringing up the marriage issue and, um, you know, with domestic partnerships and marriages. Uh, marriages recognized in other states are recognized in the state of Florida, correct? I mean, we all recognize that. I mean, my guess is Bill Longcart got married, not in Florida. So.
That's true.
Your marriage is.
That's a rumor.
Yeah. So, your marriage is recognized here. Um, and it's not all domestic partnership, it's awesome. You know, it's all types of marriages. Uh, same thing. I mean, if marijuana is, once somebody has their certification and let's say they're certified, uh, to use it in another state, you know, there's gonna be reciprocity issues. So, I would suggest that you have that sooner so that if people come in, regardless of where they obtain it, even though there might not be a point of sale in Florida, my guess is people could still find it somewhere. I'm gonna make that naive guess. Um, to have that, uh, regulation in place. So, I would suggest that, you know, um, having that, you know, get, receiving that direction from you. Other issues can have a little bit more time. Uh, one is zoning and zoning, again, I would, remember we said medical treatment centers is very broad definition. So, I would suggest that we have a definition of dispensary and regulate it. And regulated the same way we do alcohol establishments, homeless shelters, uh, sexually-oriented businesses where we put a distance location and that would come from community development telling me what distances, what distances they would recommend, uh, from like a dispensary to a dispensary because there could be traffic concerns. There, I mean, I realize there's other concerns, but I realize there could be concerns in that type of business that's gonna be unique and different depending on what, which type of thing they're operating under the, whether it's a dispensary, whether it's a cannabis farm. Uh, agricultural, council just recently, um, changed farmers' markets. I don't know how you feel about the agriculture concepts of it. Uh, the recommendation, I believe, from staff is to ban cannabis farms, but that is something council may want to talk about as well as processing centers. Um, zoning is as local government as you will ever find. It's not something that can be done county-wide. I know in some counties, they're talking about doing it like the pain pills, uh, which is how we did. We did a moratorium and then everyone else, uh, also did county, county moratoriums. But in this case, I would, um, suggest specific regulations. Then there's some other issues related to this that I would call wait and see issues. Um, we don't know, for example, whether medical marijuana will be taxed like it is in other states, like I believe Colorado taxes it, or whether it would fall under the, uh, medical marijuana would fall under like a, a medical exemption. Like, we don't pay sales tax on our medicines. So, it's possible. That's all things that the legislature has to decide. And then any of those issues, I would suggest holding off, um, until we know what, um, regulatory scheme is devised by Department of Health.
Okay. Janet?
Okay. I'll, I'll kick the ball. Um, yes, agree to banning in public places. Um, I think we should have our own regulations in place just in case. Um, there is a segment of the community, we do need to protect our minors. Um, I think that there should be uh, distances from schools, libraries and parks in place and from each other for when you're talking about the dispensaries. I don't think we should have a block of them all in a row. Um, I think that there should be, and I agree with staff, that when I was reading the research on this over the weekend, that the farms or nurseries, as they call them, um, I have security concerns about those type of places being within our community because I think that if there's gonna be a problem, that's where people are gonna try to rob and steal their product. So, along with that, when I started thinking of security, I would like to see that any dispensaries need to have, um, very strict security measurements also for those, those buildings so that both the patrons and, you know, the, the employees of those places are, are protected. Um, I, I did see that places in California that have been doing, dealing with this much longer than we have, like Oakland, San Francisco and Berkeley have very, very strict regulations. Um, maybe we need to do a little bit more research as to what they do that could fit.
Absolutely.
For our community. I would appreciate that.
What's coming, yeah, what's coming interesting out of California is the communities that got a handle on it earlier rather than later seem to be doing better. Like San Francisco, they're not maybe as draconian in regulations, you know, saying we need to do a complete ban, but they tend to do better because they have it so well-regulated, it's under control as opposed to some, you know, trying to, um, either not want to discuss the issue because I know this is awkward. I, I recognize this is not a comfortable conversation with council. We all come.
And that's so unusual for us to have something uncomfortable and awkward.
We all come from different backgrounds. We all come from different, um, generations. So, we all have different viewpoints. I get that. I understand. So, it's a very uncomfortable. But at this point, what I wanna focus on is the local government concepts, which is zoning and public places and traditional police power. But that's an excellent point.
I did see where, um, Naples has said that if they do go ahead and if the ban doesn't work for them, that they are considering that it would only be allowed in their medical hospital zoning. Obviously, we don't have a medical hospital zoning. So, um, I'm gonna look to staff to come back and tell us where that, or John is here.
Right. We've been talking about this.
To answer where we feel that this might be, the zoning might be best.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Audrey obviously laid a pretty thorough background upon what we've done, but, uh, just as council knows, your comments are kind of what we had already thought of in terms of the fact that there are states and there are communities that have done this for a long time and have done it successfully. Um, I've talked to several of you individually in terms of what your opinions are and what your goals are. And, and I wanna take those into account and using some of those, those states and, and local regulations that, that have done this well and kinda craft it from there and use that as a starting point with, with your opinions that I've received. And I'll be talking to more of you as, as time goes on to make sure that we're crafting something that reflects your intentions within the framework that we're allowed to, to present to you. But, um, if there's anything specific that you want us to address, uh, we'd be happy to do it if we're able to. Um, otherwise, I'm sure that either myself or Audrey will let you know right now if there's something that we should shy away from or maybe go in a different direction.
Yeah, I just wanna make it just a comment here is that I, I under, we all know the trepidation some people have about this and I, I understand that and I respect that. Um, but at the same time, um, you know, when it comes to the, the constitutional, if the constitutional amendment passes, uh, the people under those circumstances, they're no longer criminals. Um, they're, by definition, they're just not. Uh, and, and so, I mean, although they may have a sideline profession there, uh, a lot of them are, these are, these are people who have things that they're trying to avail themselves of medically. And, I mean, you know what? I don't, I don't, you have to have compassion for that. I think you really do. I think we should. Uh, so, I think that, that Janet's exactly on the mark here. I, I do however, think that, that we should, uh, allow you to, to be very restrictive. We, we don't wanna become the place in Southless Florida, the, the one and only place. And, and if we are, I mean, I think you should put a limit on the, the number. I think that we can do that. Uh, I think that the places that have been successful and that haven't had reoccurring problems, they've actually been places where you, they put the restrictions on distance, they put the restrictions on where, they, they put the restrictions on how many, how close, and then they've never had to address the issue again.
That would be nice.
I mean, I mean, that would be nice, right? But, but it seems like the ones, when you, when you look into it, the ones that have had the problems were the ones that were like, you know, no. And then they ran into legal problems in the, it just never, never goes away. There's always somebody wanting it. There's always somebody wanting to do it. But the, the communities that made really good, sound, restrictive regulations that nobody could really complain about because it's like, well, that's pretty fair. They were successful and they haven't been a problem. So, and, and yes, of course you, you have to make it to where you can't smoke in public. Of course you have to. Uh, so, yes, we have to do that. So, yes, Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, Audrey, I just wanna thank you for your comments because I, I took a small sample of my district and it seemed like it was split down the middle. I, people in my generation don't want drugs at all. I personally dislike drugs.
Illegal drugs.
Illegal drugs, yes. Um, I don't like OxyContin either, which is legal. Uh, but anyway, uh, the thing of it is, is regardless of, of my opinion, one of the things that I like to know is I have a person in my district who was retired, uh, law enforcement, uh, agent and, uh, he said the one thing that he, we don't need is another drug on the road. So, my question to you is how do we handle the transportation part of it? Uh, getting, you know, I mean, are we gonna have any criteria, thou shall not drive at all or something like that?
Now, the ballot talks about that. That's not a local government concern. That's.
It's a federal.
That, it's actually, well, you're talking about transport interstate commerce issues? Are you talking about the, like driving under the.
Under the influence?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, yes.
And the state statute is very clear. I highlighted not that limitation because I didn't find it a local government, but nothing in this section allows the operation of a motor vehicle, boat, or aircraft while under the influence of marijuana. So it's very clear that if this passes, that would be in the state law. The state would implement it in chapter 316, the Florida Uniform Traffic Control Law, of which we're preempted. We have very limited jurisdiction in that area.
Well, an interesting point too is that there are a great many, I got a prescription of, for all kinds of stuff. If I'm that kind of person, and I should not be driving, operating heavy machinery, doing all that, I mean, so this really doesn't apply. It's kind of like, you know, when it comes to what should you be doing while you're driving? Talking on a cell phone, typing on a typewriter, reading a newspaper? There are a lot of stuff you shouldn't be doing while you're driving. That's just one of them. If you were impaired in any way, shouldn't be driving.
And that kind of goes through it. I brought up with Audrey in some of our discussions, things that we don't really have any control over, but still concern me, everything from paraphernalia to possession and other concerns that-
Yes, Steve?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, Audrey, I really appreciate your idea of wait and see because-
Not on everything.
Not on everything, okay, but because I really don't think we have enough information, like, you know, how bad is marijuana compared to other drugs? I mean, you know, and things like that. I don't know.
Well, I really don't think that that's relevant at this time.
Right, that's not-
It's not going to be relevant for us?
The local government concerns that I have quite, and I was kind of, is, comes back to public places, you know, and control using your police power, zoning, using your zoning power. There's some other issues where marijuana, we do not know if, in some states, now I heard Mr. Forbes saying some states don't pay well, but we collect money from communication services tax. We collect franchises. Sometimes it's nice, I know that, you know, some people don't like to talk money, but money is an issue. There are issues there. There's issues with agricultural and the Right to Farm Act that I don't know if the state has been looking at. You know, as far as how you deal with farming issues. So there's some issues that until I see how the state writes it as a regulatory scheme, I would be leery, but that doesn't make me leery of doing zoning because we do zoning as a bread and butter. Or the issue of in the public places. Now I do want, also say I worked with Nicole on that issue. I want to give her some credit there.
Well, and to cut right to the chase to his question, I mean, that issue is, it's a good issue to talk about. It's a good issue to discuss, but it doesn't have anything to do with this land use part of it. If the people of the state of Florida decide that this will become a constitutional right under these circumstances, then the state's going to have to craft regulations, they're bound to craft regulations about that, and we will be bound by them. We're bound to follow the constitution of the state of Florida and the constitution of the United States. I mean, that's, that's, that's it. And if that happens, so far as questions like, what are we going to do about these people driving up and down the road? Well, they are driving up and down the road right now. I mean, I mean, those are issues that are here now, and so it's not like something is going to happen unusually.
And I'm bringing you amendment two for discussion. It was interesting because I was with Nicole and we were working on the ordinance as a matter of fact, and we started talking about amendment one, and I said, how's that affect local government? She goes, oh my gosh, and you know, we went through a whole diatribe because that's where the state will set up side funds for buying conservation lands. And I realize that doesn't deal with medical marijuana here, but it does deal with the fact that those amendments we will have to deal with because eventually the state, if they acquire the properties, they're going to want the local government to do maintenance occasionally. So there's some unfunded mandate issues and it affects your Parks Department.
So, so right now, before we go further, deeper into discussion, the main thing is what Janet is proposing and what I, Janet and I obviously got to ban the smoking in public because you, let's just face it, you can get a contact high from it. It's not fair. Don't want to, if you don't want to be high, you shouldn't be made that way. I mean-
Thought it was smelling.
I would assume so, anyway. And then also, so that smoking ban in public places makes sense. The ban in the agricultural part of it, I think that that's something that will probably evolve over time, but for right now, I think it's probably fair to say that that's something that you could probably do. But then I think, I really, I think that your point you make about medical treatment center is right on the mark. That's something, you know what, if a doctor can't suggest a prescription for something, I don't know who can or make a recommendation on a prescription for it, that, so you need to, I think we need to be cognizant of that and not write language that prohibits something that's unenforceable or whatever.
Speech also.
Or speech. And then I think we need to define the dispensary a little more clear and put regulations so far as limit the number and placement of it in some manner or form. And I think that we are in better condition overall as a city, my own opinion. I mean, I think the proof is out there. If we just severely limit it, then we are just this total outright ban. And that's the discussion I think that we need to, if that's the direction we give you, then you can go ahead and make suggestions about how to craft that. Is that correct?
That's correct. And let me just do two final points here and then I'll let you guys talk. One is, I have, like I mentioned, the smoking in public places, I have that pretty much ready to go. I would like to schedule it so that I can have it adopted on November 5th as the last reading date. In other words, working backwards and then bring it here for review, permission to advertise, and then the first reading and then the second reading so that we meet your meeting schedule. So November 5th, so November 4th, if it passed, it means we're out of advertisement money if it doesn't pass. But if it passes, we're right, ready the day after the-
Even if we digress on the rest of it, we'll have that.
Exactly. Then the second point is because people may seek zoning verifications at this time, give clear direction to staff as to the fact that we are working on these regulations, whether we adopt a zoning in progress resolution or not, whether we adopt a moratorium or not. Make it very clear so staff isn't saying, yes, a dispensary can go at X, Y, Z.
And zoning in progress would do that?
Right, just make sure staff is very clear that that's what you're working on. Now, you can't work on zoning in progress for five years.
Of course not.
You know, we could do it as a short-term measure too.
I got you. Okay, any other discussion here? I'm going to go to Bill and I'll come back to you, Mike.
Thank you. I would like to make sure, John and Audrey, that the fire department and the sheriff's department gives you information that they have on record in every place in the country in terms of the responsibilities that will be put upon the sheriff's department and the fire department in terms of what, how they have to handle the volume and the things that will happen with adding to the problem as far as I'm concerned in the country. And I think that's very important because on a daily basis, the sheriff's department is faced with many situations that are a direct result of some kind of ingestion of something. So it's very, very important that they be involved heavily.
We have planned on doing that, so it's not a problem.
Please, very important. Thank you.
Yeah, keep them as our partners throughout this process. Yes, thank you very much. Mike?
Well, I agree with Councilwoman Martin. I think we need to be as restrictive as possible on this. You know, I don't want to see it close to the schools and parks. We should ban the public smoking. I don't want to say no to everything because, you know, some people do need it medically. That's kind of my problem with the amendment, the way it's written. It doesn't exactly say what it should be prescribed for or recommended for. You know, I would never want to tell somebody, a cancer patient or a kid with epilepsy, you know, that they couldn't have it if it would truly help in that situation. But, you know, reading that article from California, it does seem like the municipalities that got ahead of it in the beginning and set up, you know, strict rules and guidelines fared the best out of them, and you know, that's what I want to see for us.
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, I take a little further view that I think we should look at banning an outright. And quite frankly, does it need to be smoked? I mean, I know we're getting into issues here, Audrey, that you say, you know, if there are, you know, these medical miracles, you know, can that be ingested as a pill? Can that be a lot of other, you know, taken a lot of other ways? And in sum, in short, I'm for an outright ban within city limits.
Okay. All right, so what I'm hearing here collectively is that, is that we should, number one, if there is a motion to, for us to go ahead and start the process for a banning of smoking ordinance, is anybody willing to make that motion at this time for the-
Smoking in public?
Smoking in public, sorry. Banning smoking in public ordinance, is there a motion to do that? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Discussion?
Okay. Are we piecemealing this? I guess I would prefer to see a whole piece brought forward. If that's the key piece, then I'll certainly vote to support it. But, and let me, for the public, just say Audrey gets, Audrey gets disrespected sometimes for some of the things she does. She's simply, she's simply putting the city ahead of the curve on this thing. And if the amendment doesn't pass, this all disappears, you know, that's fine. So an outright ban is probably a ban on something that doesn't exist anyway. But if, you know, if you hadn't brought this forward, we wouldn't be able to be the city we are. Wherever we end up, we're going to follow the law. And I want people in the audience to recognize whether you believe the law is correct or not, that's when you exercise your right to vote. That's what I intend to do with amendment two. So for those of you who are concerned, go to the polls. But this city is going to be protected and protect our citizens as best we can following the law. Sorry.
Yeah, so I think no harm, no foul on the no smoking in public. Guess what? Guess what you can't do right now? Smoke marijuana in public. So I really don't think that there'd be any harm there, putting this on the books. The advantage too is, is if January 1st, if all of a sudden it, people are like, oh no, I can do it because the constitution says so, you can say, not in public, you can't. And so you, and there is a chance where, forgive me, we may kick in this ball down the road and if we don't pass that particular part of it, we're going to, we're going to find ourselves in a situation. So I think that, I think that it's sound to go ahead and go through with a couple of these, it's not stopgap, but a couple of the ones that are more obvious than the other ones. So that's what the motion would be.
Right, as I understand it, it's a strategic point to deploy, remember, some of, you have the single subject rule, so you will have a multitude of ordinances. It's not something where we put zoning with licensing, with lighting, you know. We try to focus as much as we can on each subject individually, and each thing is a little bit different here.
Okay, parts of the puzzle. The first part of the puzzle, there's a motion and a second to, for staff to go ahead and bring forward an ordinance which bans the smoking in public of marijuana, cannabis, however you put it. And is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh? Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Now, council, would you look here, I think it is also important to approach this, the next one, which is to, to give clear direction that there is a zoning in progress because what we don't want to do, in case, in case we are unable to formulate the ordinance before January 1st, we want them to, people to know, when you come rushing in, that we have a zoning in progress. So I think that's very important for us.
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Do you need a time certain or distance? Or we're just, it's just that there's a zoning in progress?
At this time, we're just verbalizing it because until it passes, I'm not going to bring paperwork back on this.
So that, so that staff has something, they said there's a zoning in progress. We don't know if you're going to get it or you're not going to get it, but just know that this is-
Right, we're not going to tell you with definitively that you're going to have a right to put a dispensary somewhere.
Got it, got it. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that particular issue? Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, and then for the remainder, council, or along the lines of what Councilman Martin and Councilman Gibson were talking about, doing as Audrey had, not specifically, but generally laid out, which was to define dispensary, to come up with a set of regulations that were sufficiently restrictive, that they, they limited the number, amount, distances, and some other things. Also defined medical treatment center, that type of thing, sort out those issues. And then on the remainder of those issues, adopt kind of a wait and see on the rest of those, but kind of start developing them. Is, do you want to give instructions for to do that?
Yes.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, do you need anything else from us?
No, thank you. This has been very helpful to staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm sure you're going to do a good job. And as Councilman Longheart said, we have a lot of partners out there, law enforcement, the medical community, everyone else that they, you need to bring to the table when you're crafting this. And there are a lot of examples, as Audrey forwarded to you from other cities, who are right on top of this in the state of Florida too, so avail yourself of-
We're not at the forefront. And I just want to thank you all for the thoughtful discussion because it really does help us.
No, and I want to thank the public for their input too. They've been very patient, so. Okay, well, we'll, from here, let's just go ahead and go to mayor and, oh no, we're going to the city manager's report. And that would be you today.
And we only have one item for you, that's the monthly financial update. And again, it reflects what we think is a very good picture of our, the city's financial health. If there are any questions in particular, obviously Lisa's here available to answer questions. There are no particular anomalies we feel that we need to point out, however.
Okay, any questions or anything, Bill?
I have something not related to the financial report.
Okay, well, I'll come back.
John, would you comment on the trash can situation in East Benita, which may impact everybody in the city?
Sure. The solid waste department, as you know, is responsible for the trash hauling services within the city of Benita Springs and countywide. They have regulations on the books about the size and type of containers that should be used. Those regulations have not always in the past been enforced consistently. They've been a little flexible about where they allowed people to vary from that. They are about to renew those agreements for the next, I think it's a two-year cycle. That should be an action taken by the Board of County Commissioners at their next meeting, I believe. But in preparation of going forward with those extensions of the hauler's contracts, solid waste is making an outreach effort to different communities to get people more in line with the current regulations. So these, again, don't reflect a change in regulations, but maybe a more consistent effort at compliance and enforcement. As a result of that, there were some mailouts recently, and there has been some pushback from the community about the time period between when they were notified that they needed to make some changes and when they were starting to give violation notices about those changes. We're dealing with the solid waste folks, and I think they're very sympathetic to those concerns, and I expect that they'll work with us in being a little more flexible in terms of their educational outreach and the time period for compliance. So we expect that you'll get better results in the future going forward on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill, for bringing that up.
Before we leave the subject to finances entirely, though, just a reminder, Monday evening, 5 o'clock is your final budget hearing. So we expect to be able to tie up the budget conversations for this year going into our October 1 new budget cycle.
Good, thank you very much. Bill, do you have anything else for us? We'll consider ourselves at council member items now and reports. Do you have anything else for us?
The only thing I had was, the reason why I asked John to comment on that, I did get a call from somebody from Village Walk. And, you know, they're not picking up the trash, and it, but anyway, it's been worked through with John and the cooperation of the county, and I hope that it'll all work out. But communications is the key, and we're doing as best job we can in terms of dealing with the county to get the results that the people get their trash picked up. That's all I have to say.
And thank you very much for bringing it up. Mike, what do you have for us today? You have anything?
I'm good today.
Good, thank you very much. Peter, what do you have for us?
Just, you know, quickly, John and I had a discussion this morning, and it's my understanding that we are in receipt of our first map out of the DRGR, and looking forward to seeing those. And that issue, as we know, will be coming up here again soon, and look forward to working with you and seeing those maps and getting that information out to the public.
And if I could just expand on that a little bit. What Councilman Simmons is referring to is the fact that our next meeting of the Citizens Water Strategy Task Force is going to be held on the 29th of September out at the fire district offices on Benita Grande. The reason why the task force wanted to move the location, they're looking for the ability to set up some tabletops for a little wider working area. We're going to have some maps blown up so that the public is invited, property owners in the DRG are invited, the consultants that have been working with the task force are invited, as well as obviously the task force members themselves to come out and do kind of a tabletop exercise where they would look at what different options on land use might look like and how that could help in the idea of, for example, rehydrating some of the preserve areas that are out there. So it's not a finished product in the sense that the map that the councilman is referring to is not something that they're coming forward to recommend. It's more, at this point, a working tool to get towards a recommendation. We just received that last night. My plan is to have the packet, including the maps, ready for the task force about a week before the meeting on the 29th. And in this case, we'll make the full packets available to the city council also, so you'll see what they'll be working with and working on at that meeting.
Good, good. Thank you very much, Pete. Do you have anything else for us?
Good, thanks.
Thank you very much. Stephen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. John, just checking in with you, library issues still on track?
Still on track, still waiting for county administration to review the first draft that they've gotten from the consultant, then it'll be coming over to us.
Great. And I just, again, wanna thank city staff in particular, Laura and Joanne and Patrick, for their tremendous patience, especially during the storm we had, the 9/11 ceremony. And Kathy McGrath called me, and she told me that there was a German couple that was visiting Benita Springs, and they were in awe at what a wonderful presentation that they witnessed. They have never seen anything like that. And to our Jewish friends, happy Rosh Hashanah.
Oh, good, thank you. Janet, what do you have for us?
Well
I see you have a friend with you.
I do have my friend. It's that time of year again. And my buddy comes out to remind everyone that Riverfest is coming. Be nice to my buddy. And Riverfest, so mark your calendars, it's Saturday, October 25th. And of course, we're gonna do our ducky race in the river, so it's, it'll be that time to start thinking about buying and adopting your Florida Quackers. This Saturday, Mayor, I'm surprised you didn't say, is coastal cleanup.
Oh, gosh.
It's from 9:00 to 12:00, but I wanna make sure that everybody knows that the location has changed this year. It's gonna be in the Lover's Key Field, which is right across the street from Lover's Key Main Gate. So it is from 9:00 to 12:00. So I hope to see everyone there. And then October is also Adopt a Shelter Dog Month, so anybody who's thinking about a puppy, now's the time to do it. And I know John Pino brought this in this morning, but what the cover doesn't show is this awesome spread and fantastic pictures of people enjoying the Imperial River. Awesome event. John does a great job of getting people out to enjoy our river, so kudos to him. I also wanna tell you about one of the salons that we honored here just recently. They're doing a Pin Up for Pink event. All the money is going to go to the Breast Cancer Research Foundation. Of course, we all know that what October is. And October, boy. So Sunday, October 26th
I'll second that October.
From 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Bear Football Club. And you can call Corinne at 949-0500 to be part of that. Great event. And then also, I just need to share this book. It's Street Design, and it's by Victor Dover and John Massengale. I got chill bumps on my arms when I read this, and I suggest everybody read this. It's an awesome, awesome book. So I can't say enough that thank you, that that was loaned to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Two things. There were public comments on a couple of items. Shangri-La Road is, is due to be completed October 15th. There is a 50-foot stretch that's been left unpaved in order to keep people from driving down there now. The, I think it'll probably be done before that, Matt's not here, and I, so I can't answer that for sure. The second thing is, Water Task Force hasn't made a presentation to the council, have they? I've asked for Hale Irwin to come in three or four times and just explain what is going on. I'd kinda like to have an idea as council before we go too much further as to what we're doing. It's the fourth time I've asked, I mean, not officially, I guess, but
I was gonna say, I apologize if I missed that, but this is first I'm hearing about
it. I don't think you missed anything, but I, I think it's important, it's timing's right for us to understand what's going on with our task force, even though some of us have been to the meetings.
I can certainly arrange for the chair of the task force to come in and give you an update, but if you would like, I can give you a very brief one now, it's up to the
Why don't, why don't we go ahead, I like the idea of Scott coming in and giving us kind of a brief, and you can, you can assist him in getting prepared for that?
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, and we put some money into Hale Irwin, too. I'd like to see the guy that's behind us.
Yeah, let's, let's allow Scott to put it together, and, and get Hale and the rest of them.
I'll second that emotion.
Yeah, there you go.
Emotion?
I wouldn't intend to be emotional, but was. Last thing, for my fellow council members, as you know, we're working on a charter high school, Sky Academy out of the Yancey, but we're gonna have another local public high school, I'm confident here, in the very near future. This map, which now hides my face, is, picture the city. I asked Matt Feeney in the Public Works Department to identify 40 acres or more throughout the city where you might place a high school, because the high school right now is, is set to be in the DRGR area, environmentally sensitive area, and they need a minimum of 40 acres. There are some places in the city that have another 40 acres. I frankly don't know that there's anything we can do to stop where it's going. They have the right, they have the zoning, they have the property, it's their property. But that, I've been, I've been chatting with people who are familiar with building schools, that high school could be one of the key qualities to our long-term success in the city. So I wanna make sure we, even though it's not under the purview of the city, I wanna make sure that we are intimately involved in how it's built, what it looks like, and how it's structured. Specifically, academically, we, I don't know what we'll be allowed to have there, but if we can get a technology focus there, it'd be wonderful. And we also know that all the pieces have to fit together, the athletic piece, the music and arts, and we, as a city, will, will, you know, grow from this, and we need to be part of it, not sit on the sidelines. So if you don't mind, I'll continue working with these folks and keep you informed.
Good, very cool. I think it's very important.
Steve, what were the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
How about the financial side of that, to build the school? We're talking about 50 some odd million dollars, do they have that?
Right. I don't, I don't know the finances bill. What I know is our tax bill's not gonna go up because we get a high school. It's kinda like your question about the bus system. Are we paying extra? In this case, no, we're not paying extra. We're getting our money out of it.
Well, and further towards that point, the, the school board is putting together a, a task force of business people from around the community to help them try to figure out exactly that problem. So, yeah, yeah, and, and I think that, I think they actually have asked representatives from different cities and everything else like that.
They have.
So that's what they're trying to figure out, Bill. Thank you.
All right.
Pete, do you have something on that?
You said there was a couple of sites, or three sites?
Well, I'll give you
What sites that are identified?
Well, I'll give you a copy of them, but Burnwood Plaza near the charter school has acreage that's not necessarily best laid out. One of the big pieces is just on Imperial Parkway, north of the new development up there. It's privately owned. I asked them to look at the dog track, which also has enough acreage. So there, you know, I would prefer to have it near the center of the city, to get more people in the city, but that's not a decision I guess we're gonna be able to make, but we should have some influence over it just the same.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So it could back up to another school?
I think
Is one of the sites.
Yes. Well, and if you're gonna build a charter high school and another public high school within three-quarters of a mile of each other, there's gotta be some efficiencies in starting to look to how you build those together, but
Right, definitely.
Good.
I'm not smart enough to figure that out.
But as, as Bill pointed out, communication is key here, communication with the school board and with all our partners there. So thank you very much. I had a couple of things here before we get out of here. One is, there's gonna be a cleanup. Oh, wait, Janet, I already told that one.
Talk about it again, so everybody knows that it's moved.
You do a better job than that than I do, anyway, so.
And she comes with a duck.
I know. I don't have any, I don't have any props or anything, I don't have a bucket of sand, anything. Cigarette butts, something. Anyway, the cleanup is, is really important. And Joanne and Laura's team have done a great job in, because the venue is changing, and it's gonna be a great, a bigger venue, and we, she has pre-signed, I think, close to 300 people up already for this. It's gonna be a great time, so any of you wanna come out there, it, it should be great. John Pino's gonna be, coming down with his kayakers, they're gonna do some of that work there, too. So it should be great, and we won't have the problem with the parking that we've had for so long there. It got really dangerous last year. We've had so many people there at the, I was afraid somebody was gonna get ran over, so I was being traffic cop all day, trying to keep the kids from being ran over. So I think we'll be better off there on the island there. So that, and the 9/11 event was wonderful. I, I'm, I'm sorry I had to, to leave a little early, but Councilman Slakka and, and Bobby Hunter, our good friend Bobby Hunter, did a great job there. But, and Laura and her staff, again, thank you for everything that they do. Is Laura's not here, is she?
Yeah, she left.
Yeah, she left, good. But, but they've done a great job on these. All you need to do, if you get a chance, take a look at the, the schedule of events that are planned for Riverside Park for this, for this coming year. Unbelievable. I mean, it's no, it's, it's no secret anymore that that is the, the best outdoor venue in southwest Florida. It is jam-packed with all great, kinds of great things for the, the community to do, and not just city-sponsored events, all kinds of things. So it's a, really a wonderful thing. The other thing that I wanna do, I, I ran across, and I showed this to Carl, a copy of the old original booklet of the Park Master Plan, and, and I had, I shared this with Mr. O'Flin for a while back. It's just really interesting. I wanna try to get copies of it to all of you, because it's really, it's really, and Bill, you probably kept, you're a good keeper.
I have a copy.
And it's, it's really cool. I mean, some of the other newer council people may not have it. But it's, it's, it's really fun to look at, to see how we've actually pretty much followed that throughout the whole works of it. And I think it's still relevant and current, so it's kinda good to have. And that's all I have at this time. And I'd ask the council now, would you like to approve the amendments? And we have one, two, three sets of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Four?
The four sets.
Okay, four.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve all sets of four minutes. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Longcartt?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.